Trish Elglies, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the city of Dubuque City Council for August 21st, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include in-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input regarding the item that they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access codes that appear on the broadcast and livestream and are posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function and note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must include name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for tonight's meeting is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I'll return it to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Trish. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on tonight's agenda are the consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to have one of the items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input. Please remember to state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages two through five.
All right, thank you, Trish. Is there anyone who would like any of the consent items removed for separate discussion this evening? The items listed on page two through five of the agenda. Okay. Seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
We do not.
Okay.
No.
All right, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Resnick, second by. Farber, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
We'll move on to the items to be set for public hearing. We have three agenda items to be set for public hearing. Number one, proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Chadwick Block LLC providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligation pursuant to the development agreement. Two, development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Farley and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce this.
Letcher.
Letcher LLC. Number three, Chaplin Schmidt Island Trail Connection Project, Iowa DOT project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates and times specified.
Second by Wethel.
Rousseau, second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Now, we'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question. Phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is petition to vacate a portion of National Street in city of Dubuque, Iowa, agreement between city of Dubuque and Dennis R. Walker.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the two resolutions.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council adopt the resolution for the vacation of and disposal of city interest in the right-of-way property described as Lot 86A in McDonald's Park Hill, also known as Park Hill, city of Dubuque, Iowa, 1856, in the city of Dubuque. Pursuant to resolution number 225-23, the city of Dubuque and property owner Dennis Walker entered into agreement on this project. As part of that agreement, the property owner is responsible for the surveying and platting of the proposed division of the property and right-of-way vacation. The agreed-upon price for the vacation and sale of the 6,000 square feet of National Street right-of-way area is $1. The nominal property sale price in the agreement is a result of a recommendation from the city attorney's office following consultation with the Iowa Community Assurance Pool, or ICAP, to dispose of excess unimproved street and alley right-of-ways when possible in order to reduce city liability. In the recent past, the city has required market rate prices for the purchase of such right-of-way. Due to the limited number of successful right-of-way vacations and sales, staff is proposing that the city consider the sale of the excess unimproved right-of-way areas for a nominal price along with a minimal fee for required engineering staff time and publication and filing fees. The buyer would also be required to pay for any surveying costs associated with the right-of-way vacation. The city will reserve a public utility easement over the entire National Street right-of-way area to accommodate all existing utilities. The city will also reserve an access easement over the easterly half of the 50-foot National Street right-of-way for maintenance of the property and public utilities in the alley and street right-of-ways to the south of Burling Street. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider the vacation of and disposal of city interest in the right-of-way property described as Lot 86A in McDonald's Park Hill in the city of Dubuque, Iowa. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? I see no one. Do we have anyone virtually? Okay. And nothing by email? Okay. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none. All right. Motion is by Jones, second by Sprank. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is Fourth Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Port of Dubuque LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to Development Agreement between the city of Dubuque and Port of Dubuque LLC. The Fourth Amendment has been prepared, which not only extends the closing date to October 31st, 2023, but now also includes a housing incentive acquisition grant, which will reduce the developer's acquisition cost of the land by $20,000 for every residential unit created. We believe that this additional financial assistance to the project will move this project, which was initially proposed in late 2019, forward. This meets city council's goal of more aggressively incentivizing the creation of housing in the community. In the near future, a new amendment will be recommended to city council to reflect the new housing incentives available in the downtown urban renewal district. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider a Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Port of Dubuque LLC. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, do we have anyone virtually?
Not.
And any emails?
No.
Okay. Back to the table then for any discussion. So, Mike, I have a question for you. So, you know, obviously, this is a development that we have wanted to see get off the ground here for quite a while. 2019 was when this one was first there. Can you talk us through a little bit the reasoning for adding the extra incentives on there and how this is expected to help to move this project along?
Well, as it said in the documents, that this project was first proposed to the city in 2019, and of course, then the pandemic hit, inflation hit, higher interest rates hit, supply chain issues hit, and so the project has languished since then. I know that the developer tried at least on one occasion to bid the project and found it to not be affordable at that time. And so we believe that the developer does feel like they're ready to go, and we want to make sure that this time this project has a chance to actually happen. And it's a big one. I think it's about 200, it's over 200 units in the Port of Dubuque, right there behind Flex Steel, behind the parking ramp. It's the exact project that the mayor and council, I think, always had in mind, first of all, for the Port of Dubuque itself, but secondly, to help with the housing issues that we have since identified through a study by the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. It said we're 1,100 housing units short by the year 2030, and we need to get moving to fill that gap because we have this massive workforce issue, and our employers can't find workers, and workers need a place to live. But then also creating the dynamic why on a separate agenda item, we're recommending increasing the incentives for downtown housing because that's the most sustainable and resilient housing. In many cases, we'll reuse old buildings. In this case, it's filling in an infill in the downtown, and those people will be able to walk to their entertainment options, they'll be able to walk to their work options. They literally could exist without a vehicle, which is very rare in the Midwest, except major cities like Chicago or Minneapolis. So it just hits so many marks, and it's taken so long for this important project to be financially viable. We really think it's appropriate for the city to step in and help with that financial viability and get this project off the ground.
That's helpful. Thank you. And I happen to agree. I think, you know, I remember being excited when this project was first proposed and hoping to see it move along then, but obviously, the world went to a very strange place after that. So it's hopeful that we can actually get this moving because it would breathe a lot of life into an area of downtown that I think could really use it. Any other discussion before we move forward? Mr. Resnick?
Yeah, just a quick question. What is the source of these incentives? There used to be $10,000 incentives, and now they're 20.
Sure. So there's a couple of sources now. So the downtown is in an urban revitalization district and an urban renewal district. And in an urban renewal district, the city is able to capture the incremental value on improvements in the downtown district, and instead of those property taxes going to all the taxing bodies, the city is able to capture those dollars and use them as incentives to make things happen. And you have to remember that City Hall was built in 1858, before the Civil War. So it certainly was before automobiles, before electricity, before a lot of things. And so much of our community was designed not with the things in mind that exist today. And we're all the oldest city in the state of Iowa, so many of our structures are very old and need a lot of investment to be maintained. Unfortunately, over the years, a lot of them have become vacant or dilapidated, and even though we've had, oh, a billion dollars in investment in our downtown in the last 30 years, there's much more investment to happen. So the mayor and council captures that incremental taxes from the downtown urban renewal district and creates incentive programs. Now, this doesn't apply to this project because this is not an affordable housing project, but also the mayor and city council incentivizes housing in other parts of the community, and state law allows you to create what's called the Housing Tax Increment Financing District, provide some assistance with the incremental taxes to the developer, but by state law, you have to take about 40% of that increment created in a residential subdivision somewhere else in town, not necessarily downtown, take 40% of those incremental new taxes and spend it on affordable housing somewhere in your community. So what the council has chosen to do with those, 40% of those dollars, at least a lot of them, is to create these incentive programs that you just asked the question about, like $10,000 per unit to get a building rehabilitated in our downtown. Remember, that only applies to affordable units. So that doesn't apply to this project because it's not an affordable unit project, but I'm just trying to answer your question more comprehensively. So that's another source of these dollars to help incentivize getting these buildings rehabilitated. And then, all that being said, we also participate in state programs like the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. We participate in the federal historic tax credit program, the state historic tax credit program, and we also, as you learned in your work session before this meeting, we apply for grants to make these things happen, so special targeted grants from the federal and state government. So I know it's a long-winded answer, but the money comes from a whole bunch of sources. Now, the beauty of it is, it doesn't come from the City General Fund. So it doesn't directly come out of the property tax paid by the residents in the general fund. It comes from a lot of different sources.
So it sounds like it comes as a result of a council directive, and we provide housing incentives by reducing taxes?
That's correct. That's one of your elements is where you'll rebate the property taxes to the project. Remember, those taxes are only created because the project happened, so they're not coming from some other source. That incentive comes directly from that project itself. The $10,000 per unit doesn't come from that source, it comes from the other sources I described.
Okay, so, but anyway, that sounds like a good project to me.
Yes.
So thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel, to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is 2023 Maintenance Dredging Project. Public hearing harbor area dredging.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel is recommending city council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $500,000 for the 2023 Maintenance Dredging Project through adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2023 Maintenance Dredging Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, any virtual? Okay, thank you. Any emails for the city clerk? Thank you. Back to the table for discussion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, now, was this the dredging project that was mentioned in our work session with the, did we get a grant for this? Because I remember Mr. Schissel's name was mentioned and dredging. And I noticed that $100,000 is being paid by a private company, and we're also using grant money for this?
Yes. Bob, do you want to kind of explain the intricacies of this project? And it's got all of those.
Good evening. Bob Schissel, Assistant City Engineer. So for this particular project, the 2023 Maintenance Dredging Project, it is not grant-funded. We are using funds that the mayor and city council approved as part of the '23 budget. So we're utilizing those funds. At the last city council meeting, the mayor and city council authorized us to apply for the FY '22 Iowa DNR Fish and Wildlife Service BIG grant, boating infrastructure grant, tier-one grant for dredging. So we applied for that at the last city council meeting. So as Mike said, it's kind of complicated. So the plan is, is that we would utilize the funds that we have right now, currently budgeted, to do this particular project to provide and to assist in dredging at both the Dubuque Marina and at the American Marina, the yacht basin. Then the plan is, is if we're successful in getting the 2022 DNR BIG grant for dredging, that grant, we would then do a dredging project next spring, utilizing those grant dollars. And then we also have another plan to apply for the next round of DNR BIG grant dredging dollars. So we're actually currently working on that, and I'll be bringing that grant application before the mayor and city council, I'm hoping, to the September 5th meeting. And if that all works out and we get both of those grants, our hope is that we would be utilizing both of those BIG grants to do a pretty significant dredging project next spring, early summer.
Great. Thank you. It just constantly reminds me, Mr. Van Milligan, with market rate leases on our Mississippi River, properties that were being rented out, leased out, and, you know, it's a realistic number because there's a lot of upkeep that we need to do on these riverside properties. So I appreciate, again, I keep remembering when he brought those up, and it was, you know, it was absolutely needed and really brought in, saved a lot of money for our citizens here in Dubuque, you know, millions of dollars over time. So, and I'm glad to see that we have more plans because what do other communities do that can't afford it? They just, their river, it just neglect, and then it becomes unusable if you don't, you know, dredge these things out, and it just becomes a sandbar, doesn't it?
It is. You know, I can't speak for other cities, but it is a significant cost to dredge these days. It's not cheap. It's about $30 a yard to move dredge material. So, you know, the cost adds up really fast.
I remember the William &amp; Black was a dredger. What are the ones that are dredge? What are the boats that they use now? Nothing.
So the William &amp; Black, the historic William &amp; Black, was an old hydraulic dredge that they used. Well, they still do use it, it's just the old boat, but they, it's almost like a big vacuum and a pump where they, you know, that will suck the material, the riverbed material, and then they will pump it and dispose of it at some particular location. For us, in our topography, we don't have that luxury to be able to hydraulically dredge. We do not have the, you know, the spaces along our riverfront to be able to pump the material, too. So all of our permits are for mechanical dredging, which is basically a large excavator that you would see on land, but that large excavator is actually on a platform barge, and they actually use an excavator with a bucket to dig the material. That material is then is offloaded into a material barge, and then that's hauled off and disposed of. So it's just kind of the nature of where we live and our topography and where we have to dispose of the material. But yeah, it's not cheap.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Bob, if I'm understanding this correctly, what you're proposing here is outside of the original plan and the original intent, you're actually going in a larger area, so to speak, just so you can look ahead and make sure that this channel is open for boaters in the future? Is that reasoning sound?
Yeah, so we, this, the spring, when the water was still high, we hired a contractor to come in, and they did what's called bathymetric survey, where they come in with a boat and they take soundings of the river bottom in the Piazza Channel, Mississippi, all of our harbors, down at Rivers Edge Plaza, you know, we did those bathymetric surveys all over. We then got that data, and we were able to model it and look at, you know, where the dredging needs were, where we had shallow water. We then went and sat down with both Dubuque Marina and American Marine, and we had these, you know, the data in front of us, the bathymetric, the contours, and we sat with them, and we said, okay, what are your needs? Where are you having operational challenges today? And they identified for us kind of like their priority one, priority two, priority three, and so right now, we are addressing both of their requested priority ones to be able to dredge kind of an open channel so that both recreational and transient boaters can actually get into the marina. And then, as I mentioned before, you know, if we're successful in getting these BIG grants, then we will just kind of continue that effort. And the hope is that we can kind of open up some open waterways, so to speak, into these marinas, and if we can open them up enough, you know, keep our fingers crossed that we'll be able to keep water flowing and things like that, and then investment, then by creating these more open waterways, they'll be able to maintain themselves and be a little more sustainable. So, you know, it lasts for a number of years. That's our hope.
I want to commend you on it because I think it's an excellent example of using data and then being able to have a partnership to be able to plan this out in that way, to be able to justify a significant investment and one that's going to last for a while. I think it's a really good idea. I just, I know we hadn't seen something like this, so I appreciate you explaining it a little bit more so we can get a sense of what we're really looking at here.
And I guess I would like to add one other note. You know, I would like to acknowledge both Dubuque Marina and American Marine for coming to the table and working with us. They have both agreed, and those agreements will be coming here shortly, but they have agreed to provide the local match for these BIG grants for dredging that we're going to go after. So we will minister them, and we will do the dredging, we'll do the projects, but they are, they've agreed to step up and provide the local match. That's off to them.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much, Bob. There being no further discussion for this one, we have a motion by Rousseau, second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is voluntary annexation request, Butler Children's Garden Foundation, Inc., known as Wonderwood Gardens.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Farber and a second by, I believe I heard Resnick first, we'll just say. So, motion by Farber, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Planning Services Manager Wally Wernamont is recommending city council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by Butler Children's Garden Foundation, Inc., the applicant and the property owner, for approximately 18.7 acres of property. The resolution maps and other supporting documentation are attached. The submitted annexation request is to allow the development of the Butler Children's Garden, known as the Wonderwood Gardens. The Children's Garden Activity Center proposes to be adjacent to and accessed through the Dubuque Arboretum. To facilitate that connection and to ensure provision of city Dubuque services and utilities, the applicant is seeking annexation. By Iowa code, the annexation will be subject to final approval of the State of Iowa City Development Board, because the property is considered to be in an urbanized area since it is within two miles of the city of Asbury and the city of Sageville. City staff will give a short presentation tonight. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry for my, my tallness. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Wally Wernamont, Planning Services Manager. Just as the city manager has indicated, the butlers are looking at annexing about 19 acres of land into the city. This is directly adjacent north of the arboretum, and they're looking at annexing that into the, into the city of Dubuque, not only for water and sewer, because we have a pre-annexation agreement that they've signed to, but then also for calls for service. So if there's ever a situation where a child or someone may be injured on that property, currently what would happen is the voluntary fire department located in the county would have to come service that property. By annexing it in the corporate limits of the city of Dubuque, the city of Dubuque will be responding to those, those cases. It just made more sense to have the property annexed into the corporate limits for those services, especially since we're providing sanitary sewer and water services to the property. So, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay. Real quick question. Are we without a computer and presentation tonight, or do we have the access to that still? I wasn't sure if we had, because I see a presentation attached here, and I was just curious.
Yeah, so, including your packet, I have a PowerPoint presentation. There's no computer here, so. But anyway, I was just going to show the location of the, the property in respects to the arboretum, so.
Okay.
All right.
We don't have it tonight. Okay, perfect. That's all I need. Well, we are in a public, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approving a voluntary annexation request filed by Butler Children's Garden Foundation, Incorporated, for approximately 18.7 acres of property. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one. Any virtual? Okay. Any emails, city clerk?
No.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Ms. Wethel.
I'd just like to thank everybody at the city and in planning for the hard work on this. The Children's Garden, Wonderwood, is going to create an incredible space and place for families, children. It is going to be an asset to our community, and it's also going to have ADA accessibility in areas of the space, as I understand it, and so, all that we can do to support the safety of that area, I think, is crucial. So, thank you for doing such a great job on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Just quickly, I just think it's very appropriate that, that this area includes some former Union Park land, and that we're going to, again, use it as a park for families, and thank you to the Butler Foundation for their inspiration and their hard work on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion by Farber, second by Resnick. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is request to rezone 1064 and 1070 University Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Wally Wernamont, Planning Services Manager. The request before you tonight is rezone property from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center to C3C, which is our general commercial district, with some conditions, and I'll get to the reasons why we're placing conditions on this property. This property is, is known as The Whiskey. It has been a bar tavern that's been in operation for over 30 years. When it was legally established prior to 1975, a bar and tavern was a permitted use at that location. However, in 1975, as part of, as part of a rezoning, or update to a zoning ordinance, the property was zoned to C2, and that bar tavern use was then classified as a legal non-conforming property. Some people refer to that as grandfathered. So, it's a legal non-conforming property, which basically means is, a bar tavern is a permitted use, it's allowed to operate at that location as is, but they're not allowed to expand or have outdoor activities or anything associated with that. We were approached by the property owner with regards to looking at using some of the space on the exterior of their property for outdoor beanbag tournaments and football-watching game events for that. So, based on the zoning, they'd have to rezone it to a permitted use. So, they're looking at rezoning the property to C3 General Commercial. And as part of that rezoning, we notified all property owners within 200 feet of the property, and they did receive letters of support from the neighboring radio station across the street, as well as a petition that's been included in your packet for the property, in support of that. We did not receive any letters of opposition, and at the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request for that, for that property. Actually, there was a unique situation with regards to some easements on how the parking lot was laid out, and it was a shared easement with a adjoining property that came before the zoning board of adjustment and received a parking variance, and tonight, during your consent item, agenda list, you actually approved a, a removal of that variance request in order to make this happen a little bit more. So, the property owner is present to ask, answer any questions that you may have with regards to the request, but, you know, the zoning board of adjustment held a public hearing, and like I mentioned before, they discussed the request. Those conditions that we're talking about placing on the property involve the hours of operation, for how long the property can be opened, in addition to limiting the signage to what's the same signage in a C2 district, as opposed to what's allowed in a C3 district, and then also, you know, limiting the, all the permitted uses in a C3 except for bar and tavern. So, if you look at that memorandum of agreement that's included as part of this ordinance, which the property owner had to sign prior to us bringing this before you, because state law requires if there's a memorandum or a conditional rezoning, they have to agree to those conditions in writing, and the property owner has, has done so. And so, basically, what we've done is we've looked at all the C2 uses, and we eliminated everything, or we allowed everything in the C3 that was zoned C2, with the exception of the bar and tavern. So this would allow The Whiskey to have those outdoor events, the, the dining, and then also those opportunities that he's looking at doing, and then also regulating the hours of operation for those. So, hopefully to help mitigate any potential concerns, but like I said, he's received a lot of support from the neighborhood, and he's been operating at that location for over 30 years, so. So by a vote of five to zero, the zoning advisor commission recommends that the city council approve the request with the conditions as submitted as part of that memorandum of agreement. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approving a request from Chad Streff, sorry, to rezone property at 1064 and 1070 University Avenue, from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center to C3C General Commercial with conditions zoning, the zoning, sorry, with conditions. The zoning district will allow for outdoor activities and dining, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval with conditions, including limits on the hours of operation for any outdoor use, C2 district signage, and bulk regulations, and aside from the bar tavern use, all uses would be limited to those in the C2 district, and a memorandum, memorandum of agreement would be signed before the zoning could be finalized. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one. Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
All right. And Trish?
Yep.
Okay. Back to the table for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Just got to punctuate, I guess, how, how impressive it is to see letters of support from the neighbors for, for a bar. That's unusual, and that tells me that these folks are doing a great job, we're running the place, and we wish them well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any others? Yeah, I would just have to agree. I'm, I'm happy to see that this is moving forward in this way, with agreement and with clear discussion with the rest of the neighborhood. I appreciate that there was some very thoughtful conditions placed on this that I think will really help them continue to be a great neighbor, so, it's great. All right, well, the motion is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Trish, would you call, or would, yes, sorry. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number six is request to rezone 190 North Crescent Ridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, part of the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Wally, please.
Yes, Wally Wernamont, Planning Services Manager. The request before you tonight is to rezone the subject property from CS Commercial Service and Wholesale to C3 General Commercial to accommodate an indoor recreational facility, specifically a CrossFit gym. The indoor recreational facility is not permitted in a commercial service zoning district. The property is also planned as a lawn care contractor shopping yard, and it, and is allowed in both the CS and C3 zoning districts. So this property is located at 190 North Crescent Ridge. It's approved with a one-story metal warehouse building. It's kind of down behind the Hobby Lobby site down there at the end of North Crescent Ridge. It was constructed in 2004, and the current building is currently not in use. It's being adaptively remodeled in the interior for the lawn care business, which is permitted in a C3 and a CS, but however, they'd like to expand that types to use for the CrossFit types operation, which would require the property rezoned to C3. It is located down in an old quarry that Chick-fil-A used to operate, and this building was used as an equipment shop facility. And at the public hearing, Mr. Kafir, who's the gentleman who's looking at rezoning the property, spoke in favor of the rezoning request. He talked about, you know, his rezoning the property to allow that CrossFit use, but then also Rod Chick-fil-A got up and spoke in favor of the request, saying that it would be a great fit in the C3 zoning district, and staff discussed all the characteristics of the property. It's very unique. It's kind of tucked down. People don't even know it exists, kind of behind the property. And if you've been down there, the land is basically, it is a limestone shelf, basically that wraps around and kind of tucks behind, where the Catfish Creek kind of snakes through there, and then also there's Oak Grove as a residential neighborhood that should come in right off next to the Hobby Lobby property for that. So, during the discussion, the commissioners didn't have any questions or concerns with regards to the request. The property is in the process of going through a site plan review, because they need to look at expanding their parking lot, they have some landscaping requirements that they need to meet, but by a vote of five to zero, the zoning advisor commission recommends the city council approve the rezoning request as submitted. A simple majority vote, the city council needs in order to approve the request. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a request from Adam Kafir, Sims Properties LLC to rezone property located at 190 North Crescent Ridge, from CS Commercial Service to Wholesale, and Wholesale to C3 General Commercial zoning district, that the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the rezoning request as submitted. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one. Do we have any virtual?
No.
Thank you. Any emails, Trish? Thank you. Back to the table for discussion. Looks like a good place to workout. All right. Seeing no discussion. Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, or I'm sorry, Trish, that was the first time, that was the first time I did that. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address. Phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to an action item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have any public input this evening?
Howdy, folks. My name is Dale Lesline. I live at 17291 Asbury Road. I'm with the Dubuque County ATV/UTV Alliance, and along with our friends from the NEET Club, the Northeast Iowa Action Trails Club, we're the organizations that six years ago started the process of opening up Dubuque County for ATVs and UTVs. And today, we are here to ask the city of Dubuque to join in. And I'd like to give you a little bit of an update on where things are at right now. There's 972 towns in the state of Iowa. As of this morning, there's at least 937 or 96% that are open. The vast majority of these are small towns, but the big towns are clearly looking at it, and they're coming on board very quickly. The town that has a very significant comparison to Dubuque is Council Bluffs. Council Bluffs is a population of about 63,000, a few thousand more than Dubuque. They've been open for two years, and they've been very successful. They've had no problems whatsoever. Marion, Iowa, has been open for nearly a year, and things are going so well down there. What we're hearing is that Cedar Rapids by next spring could have an ordinance in place. Waterloo is currently scheduling a work session to discuss it. Some of the towns that have just recently opened up, the town of Clinton, Iowa, North Liberty, Iowa, and also Iowa's fifth-largest and fastest-growing town, Ankeny, has been open almost a month. One of the questions you're probably going to ask is why would we want to open up Dubuque for ATV and UTV usage on it? Well, first off, it'd be great for the residents, especially the ones that live close to the county, so they could get access without having to trailer in and out. But the big winner would clearly be the city of Dubuque and the economic impact that this could have. I'd like to make a comment here by a gentleman by the name of Ron Bisbos. He is the executive director of the Grant County Economic Development Corporation, and in the July 16 Telegraph Herald, he made this comment. He says, "I get many requests daily for ATV and UTV maps from people from around the Midwest. It is the single biggest thing we've seen the last three to four years for visitor activities." And I can clearly back that statement up because the Dubuque County ATV/UTV Alliance, so we've been on the road since September 19 of 2019, almost four years now, and we have received 1,506 requests for people wanting to come to Dubuque with their UTV anyhow on a vacation. And these people spend a lot of money. Anyhow, it's not uncommon for people on a three-day weekend to spend $1,000 and to show you the money that we're sending across the river to Wisconsin. Two weeks ago, I was coming back from Dodgeville, and it's about an hour drive from Dodgeville to Dubuque, and I counted 29 pickup trucks with Iowa plates pulling UTVs in Wisconsin in less than an hour's time. That's $30,000 in an hour's time. So you guys are sitting on a gold mine here. And to open up would cost minimal, but the reward would be great. And the next thing you're probably going to ask is can these be operated safely in Dubuque? And the answer is they already are. The city of Dubuque owns a fleet of John Deere utility gators that have been operating for many years. Alliant Energy has also been operating these as well. And these things are clearly more safer than what is already on your roads. Right now, a 14-year-old operating a moped without a helmet is legal on your streets. So we are clearly anyhow of it. If you decide you want to move forward with an ordinance, we've already had a meeting with your city manager, your police chief, your city engineer. We provided them with the state ordinances, ordinances from across the area, the other cities on it, so they're up to speed on it. The one thing we would really like to do is to tonight send an invitation to the entire city council, the city manager, anybody else who would like to go on a ride on a UTV and experience what this is all about, to see what life is in the slow lane at 35 miles an hour, to get an opportunity of what the next big thing is, and it's here today. And we would really love anyhow to get an opportunity to see what this is all about on it. You know, if Council Bluffs can do it, if Marion can do it, if Ankeny can do it, Sioux Falls, South Dakota is already doing it, Salt Lake City is doing it, Dubuque can do it too. Dubuque has always been a progressive town. We've always found new ways to bring people to town, whether it be dog tracks or casinos or anything like that. Anyhow, this is new. This can be done safely. You will not find one shred of evidence that this cannot be tried and done successfully in Dubuque. And tonight, the Dubuque County ATV/UTV Alliance would officially request that Dubuque City Council could come up with an ATV/UTV ordinance to allow us into your town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale, for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay? Got my hearing aids in, and sometimes I talk a little light. My name is Paul Schultz, and I reside at 1040 Mount Carmel Drive. I'm here because, partially because I wasn't aware, I didn't get the communications regarding the strategic planning, which usually happens this time of the year. I'm in a subscribing to be told about those things, and so I just found out about that today. It was just a glitch, you know, in the system, and so I feel I ought to bring some consideration to you that is really appropriate for your considerations of future policy discussions. So there's an issue of significant concern to members of this community, where I served for 18 years as the Dubuque Resource Management Coordinator, and in particular to the community to which I now belong at Mount Carmel Bluffs. The issue is the potential collapse of our food scrap composting program and its impact on our status as a leading, growing, sustainable community. We would like to help to sustain this 15-year program by bringing it to the council's attention and proposing selecting it as a priority in the upcoming strategic planning sessions. Our curbside food scrap collection program is one of the first 25 programs in the United States. Also, there are now 200 full-scale composting programs using food residuals and food scraps, and one of those which is in Iowa City. 25% of Dubuque's trash collection is wasted food and food scraps, approximately 25,000 tons per year. The DMA SWA contractor, SCAS, is assessing the suitability of the current facility infrastructure to comply with IDNR requirements to compost food scraps. Following this assessment and potential new requirements, upgraded management practices will be needed to continue composting food scraps at the DMA SWA campus. Without a new DNR permit application and stricter compliance, our city-managed food scrap collection and city-managed composting program would likely be issued a cease and desist order as early as this October. This would affect our 500-plus green cart subscribers, our yard waste commingling customers, schools, institutions, and interested residents, as well as those who have been waiting for over a year to be allowed to participate. Commitment to expanding food scrap diversion into composting is written into the DMA SWA Environmental Management System Report, our comprehensive plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the Dubuque County Food Policy Strategic Plan. I am requesting that priority be given during this year's city council strategic planning to continue and to expand the food scrap curbside collection and composting with DMA SWA. I plan to attend some of these sessions as I have in the past. Thank you for your kind consideration of this request.
Thank you, Paul, for your comments. Any other public input this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm one of those new residents that Terry Goodwin was talking about, and I come here with great enthusiasm this evening. I am one of the new self-proclaimed ambassadors of Dubuque. I just love being here, and I'm here to address an issue, just following on what Paul shared about the food scrap composting program. He actually made me aware of what that was and how it was going on. And I have moved here from California, so, I mean, we're like fanatics about composting and recycling. And I was so happy, when I first got here, I stayed in the north, on the north side at Stone Ridge, at a Stone Ridge townhouse, and they had the composting, the green cart program, and I was like, yes, this is wonderful. And then I recently moved, I stayed there until they completed Mount Carmel Bluffs, where I met Katie Wessel just this past week, and we don't have anything in place. And so they put it on the residents, the management of Presbyterian Homes says, go for it, you know, like, figure it out. And so that's why I'm here tonight, and then because we don't have a composting program in this great big complex. And it would be something very attractive to maintain and not to see it lapse if the program would ever lapse. It's in place, and Dubuque has been a leader in the composting program. I mean, for that, that would be shameful to see that that, because for whatever reason, whether it's mismanagement or permits or whatever it is, that makes it go away for a while would be horrible. And that's why I'm here, just to make that statement. And I want to thank the Greater Dubuque, I always get their name wrong, the Greater Dubuque Development Corps Foundation. I see familiar faces. We met, and we met, we met at the Greater, what do you call it, the Distinctively Dubuque Program. And we were not only welcomed to come to a venue like this, but we were encouraged to come and speak up and to make our intentions known and our interests known. And we missed you on the night of our opening meeting, but you were at the Des Moines County State Budgeting Meeting, I think, or something like that. And Dan McDonald stood in for you, and that's why I'm here, and I'm going to continue to be here. This is my place. This is my new home, and I hope to see it continue as a wonderful place where you're conscious of the environment being affected by this composting program. So, thank you.
And I don't think I caught your name and address.
Oh, I missed that.
That's okay.
Julia Casella, 1040 Carmel Drive, Mount Carmel Bluffs.
Thank you very much, Julia, for your comments. Any others this evening? All right, seeing no one else here. Do we have anyone virtually? Okay. Anything else from the city clerk's office? Okay. Last chance then for anything else on the action item agenda tonight or anything else under the control of the council. Okay, we can move on to action items then, please, Trish.
Moving on to action items. Action item number one, Telegraph Herald, my view, article by Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, Dubuque credit rating increase can bring substantial taxpayers' savings.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, and if you bear with me, it's under 700 words. I'd like to read Jennifer Larson's op-ed, which appeared in the Telegraph Herald. It's titled, "Dubuque's Credit Rating Increase Can Bring Substantial Taxpayer Savings," and it was printed on August 13, 2023. On July 11, Moody's Investor Service upgraded the city of Dubuque's insurer rating and outstanding general obligation unlimited tax bonds, I'm sorry, it's issuer rating, not insurer rating, and outstanding general obligation unlimited tax bonds from AA3 to AA2, the third-highest rating possible. The improved rating will assist the city in securing the best terms for financial products like loans, which can provide substantial savings for the city and taxpayers. According to Moody's, the issuer rating was upgraded to AA2 because, and I quote, "The city has strong financial operations and ample revenue-raising flexibility, which has resulted in steadily improved available fund balance and cash. The city serves as a regional economic center, and its regional economic growth rate has outpaced the nation over the past five years. The city's local economy is likely to remain strong because of its mix of commercial and industrial uses, stable population, and steady tax-based growth," close quotes. Moody's subsequent credit analysis of the city of Dubuque states, and I quote, "The city's healthy financial operations with strong reserves have resulted in steady improvement in available fund balance and cash ratios," close quotes. Just as an individual, just as individuals have their own credit report and rating issued by credit bureaus, cities are evaluated by their own set of rating agencies to assess their creditworthiness. Moody's is the agency that evaluates the creditworthiness of the city of Dubuque bonds. The city provides full disclosure of operations and a broad range of financial information to Moody's to assist with its determination of the city's bond rating. Moody's also considers the community's economy, including indicators such as median household income and economic growth. Moody's opinion of that creditworthiness, in other words, the issuer's financial ability to make interest payments and repay the loan in full at maturity is what determines the bond's rating and affects the yield the issuer must pay to entice investors. The rating of a city's bond is a measure of their credit quality. The rating greatly influences interest rate, investment appetite, and bond pricing. The independent rating agencies issue their ratings based on future expectations and outlook. A higher bond rating generally means the city can borrow at a lower interest rate, saving taxpayers millions of dollars. City staff follows the policy direction of the mayor and city council, as it prudently manages the general debt service and enterprise funds and attempts to issue and structure debt to maintain or increase current bond ratings, as this provides for a lower cost of borrowing. Moody's rangings range on a scale from AAA, which is the highest, to C, which is the lowest, with 19 different designations in between. Moody's has also assigned AA2 to the city's taxable general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A, which were sold on July 17 for $6,29,100 at an average taxable interest rate of 4.7%. Dubuque's low property tax rate and strategic use of debt provide additional context on the city's fiscal health. Of the 11 largest cities in Iowa, Dubuque has the lowest city property tax rate. The highest city's rate is 110% higher than Dubuque's, and the average of the 10 other cities is 49% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. When comparing the utilization of statutory debt limit, Dubuque is the fifth lowest among those 11 cities at just 41%. The mayor and city council's fiscal management and the hard work of city staff have the city of Dubuque in an excellent position to support continued investments that are making a difference in our community and continued investment in the infrastructure that must exist for Dubuque to continue to thrive. And then the newspaper gives some information about Jennifer. So Jennifer Larson became the city of Dubuque's Chief Financial Officer in January. She had been the budget director for the city from 2006 to 2019, when she was promoted to Director of Finance and Budget. Prior to her role as budget director, Larson was a senior associate with IBALE, LLP in Dubuque. Larson holds a bachelor's science in accounting from Loris College. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Really appreciate this addition to the agenda of this particular item. You know, hopefully people got a chance to read it in the paper and see it, but this kind of kicks off a number of good news agenda items that we have tonight, so thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
It's probably pretty obvious to everybody how lucky we are to have Jennifer Larson and people like her on our staff, but she's been doing her job plus another job that we've had difficulty filling for quite some time, and she not only wrote that very compelling article, but she caused it in many ways. Her work behind the scenes to keep us aware and keep us on track and to understand all of the various regulations and rules and the nuances that caused Moody's needle to move one direction or another certainly made it possible for this to all happen. So congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, and this actually ties into some things we've already talked about tonight. I mean, the ability for a city to be able to borrow at competitive rates and rates that are going to be good for the taxpayer is, it's an incredible opportunity to be able to move things forward and be able to do the things that we want to do around here. Ms. Farber?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And it also gives the pronouncement, if you will, to investors that are coming to the city of Dubuque or looking to expand and new businesses coming into Dubuque that we have a very creditworthy municipality and also that the future expectations, per their own words, are pretty solid. And so if you were to be a potential investor into the Dubuque area, you know that we're on strong footing.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, and I just wanted to say so much work was done, especially by staff. I mean, her department, of course, but all the city managers, pardon me, all the department managers are in on this every budget period, I know that. And I've always said that financial strength is the fundamental strength that allows all of our goals and priorities to advance. And it's so, it's great that we maintain that idea and we're going to maintain that financial strength and go forward with these goals and priorities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. There being nothing else on that, we have a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Russel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is Dubuque named one of 11 Iowa-thriving communities by Iowa Finance Authority and Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, so this is additional affirmation from an outside review, so this is not us. This is an outside reviewer reflecting on the city of Dubuque, the decisions you make and the activities we conduct. And as opposed to reading our media release that announced that we received this recognition, I'm going to read a media release from the Iowa Finance Authority and the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And it says, "It's no secret that housing is the start for upward economic opportunity and that families, communities, and businesses will thrive when all Iowans have access to homes they can afford. Meeting the housing demands of..." Meeting the housing demands of our robust economy is going to require a strategic, proactive, and innovative effort, including from Iowa communities and employers, to ensure that all Iowans can afford and have the opportunity to live in the communities where they work. This is why the Iowa Finance Authority and the Iowa Economic Development Authority introduced the Iowa Thriving Communities designation to elevate best practices from communities that are going above and beyond to leverage innovative methods to attract housing opportunities for their workforce. Dozens of Iowa communities completed an intensive application process to be designated an Iowa Thriving Community, and 11 have been awarded the prestigious designation. Iowa Thriving Communities will serve as models for other communities on both a statewide and national level in attracting housing development for all income levels. The designation also comes with highly sought scoring points for the federal housing tax credit and/or workforce housing tax credit program. The designation and scoring points are effective through 2024, and they provide a list of the 11 communities that were designated and, quite frankly, recognized for their innovation, and of course Dubuque is on that list."
Well, thank you. Mike, discussion. I just want to point out the fact—I mean, we all know this here because, you know, we were there for goal-setting last year, and we've done some pretty impressive things this year when it comes to housing incentives, but housing incentives was one of our goals and priorities for this past year, and we talked a lot about that, and we set those goals and priorities about a year ago. And within a month, staff came back with some great options for us to be able to move forward, to be able to have more housing here in Dubuque. So Mike, today—as of today, we've been kind of keeping track of how many housing units are in the pipeline. We knew—I know that we've got a report from GDDC coming up here, but we knew from a study that they did that it was 1,100 units we needed, that we're short at least that many units. What—we're we at today as far as you know?
Yes, thank you, and I do have that updated information as of today. And as you said, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation did a housing needs study because we have all these companies short of workforce, and you can't have a worker if they don't have somewhere to live. And the housing study showed we're 1,100 housing units short by 2030. The mayor and city council almost immediately adopted that as a priority last August and September adopted a new incentive program for housing. And as of today, we've got 1,942 lots or housing units that are under development at some stage in the process.
Thank you for that update. You know, this is one of those places where it's been very successful. We've done—you know, as a city and as a community, and this is a community effort. This is not just the city government that pushes this forward. We're a partner in this. But as a community, we've really—we've really started to move on this in the last year, and I'm very happy to see it. That does not mean that we are done. We definitely need to keep moving, and I'm glad to see this as—you know, we're in the club now with a number of other cities that are really trying to push for this as well, so this is a great accomplishment.
I'm glad you make that partnership point because those over 1,900 units means hundreds of millions of dollars of private investment.
Absolutely. All right. Well, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to receive and file. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number three is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Quarterly Report and Presentation of GDDC's Annual Report.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Turn it over to Rick Dickinson.
First of all, I think Paul and Julia left. I'd like to commend Paul for his lifelong commitment to sustainability, and if you don't feel better about yourself having met Julia, then I don't know what can make you feel good. She did attend our distinctly Dubuque class. She came up to me with that same presentation. She moved here from California and absolutely loves this community, and we're just thrilled to have her because, you know what? You can be great here. My name is Rick Dickinson. I have the pleasure of serving as the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and I am here tonight to fulfill one of the collaborations we have with the city, and that is to inform the citizens of Dubuque of what Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is up to in our partnership with the city of Dubuque. Just as we have tremendous investment from the private sector, we have partners on the public sector as well, and that's why things get done in Dubuque. I'm going to discuss briefly workforce, housing, transportation, broadband, our business services program, and I will get to our annual report shortly. Workforce. Before I begin, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to be here. Most excellent council members, city manager Mike Van Milligan, and your tremendous staff. It's a pleasure to be here, and most importantly, it's a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. Workforce. June 2023, we will actually get new numbers probably tomorrow morning, but as of June for 2023, we have 61,000 people working in the metropolitan statistical area of Dubuque, which is Dubuque County. This is 23,000 more than the darkest days of the 1980s. It's 4,200 more than June of 2020 in the depths of the pandemic. It's 400 better than June of 2019 pre-pandemic. We're making some tremendous progress on job growth. We have the fourth highest ranking in job growth in the state of Iowa since 2010, and the fifth highest ranking in population growth in the state of Iowa since 2010. Housing. Congratulations to the city on the Iowa Thriving Communities designation. This is going to help developers in our market. This designation increases the number of points available to applicants for state funding, both state and federal historic tax credits. It's going to be a benefit to them, but it also makes Dubuque a model for the rest of the state and our nation. I congratulate the city for that achievement. Thank you for what was discussed early, and that is the change in the housing programs and incentives. Greater Dubuque identified housing as an issue in our info-action program, sitting down with businesses, over 300 businesses every year, and they identified housing for their workforce as a critical issue. We then wanted to put some numbers to that and data to it, and so we hired ECIA. The investors in Greater Dubuque Development paid for a housing study, and it gave us the information that said, yes, we have a deficit of at least 1,100 units in order to have the workforce housing that we need in this community. We took that information then to the city manager, the mayor, and council, and you acted. And yes, as you just shared, we now have 1,942 lots and units in some stage of development. Kudos to you. That is a huge accomplishment. Transportation. We understand that transportation is one of the barriers, especially for the unemployed, underemployed population, to have the dignity and the reward of work. And so we went about the work of trying to remove some of the barriers to that work, and that includes transportation. The workforce transit routes were established in January of this year, 2023, in partnership between Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the city of Dubuque, and the Jewel. And Ryan, who heads up your team at Public Transit, came up with workforce housing—workforce routes for public transit. We found that as a success. It was funded by the Board of Directors of Greater Dubuque Development. On the initial trial, 15,000, the city has agreed to continue that operation based on its success beginning July 1, and we thank you for doing that. We also thank you for waiving the fee for the Jewel Transit System for higher ed in Dubuque County. That's a tremendous step to assure, as best we can, the future of higher education in our market. I've told you time and again, if not for higher education, we would be Southern Iowa three degrees colder because it is the key to our success. And just today, I heard breaking news with Platteville, that University of Wisconsin Platteville is furloughing employees, has a 9 million-plus deficit. Higher education is in trouble in America, ladies and gentlemen, and it's our role to make sure that they can survive here better than any place else in the United States. So thank you for making public transit available to those students, not only as an amenity to the students, but to bring them into our community and get them off campus, show them the employment and the entertainment opportunities in our community, have this become their second home so there's a greater likelihood it will be their home because we know they can be great here. Broadband. Again, we understood through our info-action interviews that broadband was an issue in our community. We had two providers, and no one was happy. You stepped up. You changed regulation. You changed the price structure. Today, we have 10 providers, and one I'm on is doing a build-out of fiber to the home will be completed by 2025. Thank you, and congratulations for that leadership. InfoAction, our business retention and expansion program. We had our annual report that was released at our annual meeting. In addition to our annual report, we did 305 interviews of businesses in Dubuque County and some in Grant and Joe Davies as well. And these are the results. Top priorities for the community, quality of life, according to the business community, quality of life, amount, affordability of housing, other, including childcare and air service, entertainment venues, health and wellness opportunities, creation of more local renewable energy, water and air quality improvements, and environmental reduction of waste. That's what the businesses told us. Top barriers to growth, finding employees and employee training, one. Two, air service, no surprise. Three, population, market size, and capacity. Top three community strengths, quality of life and amenities, market size, location, and customer loyalty, community, leadership, support, partnerships. These are questions we ask of business, and I have folks who have contacted me since there's been some discussion since April about dissatisfaction in the development community with development in Dubuque. And they asked me, well, why haven't you found that in your work with businesses with over 300 interviews over a 12-month period? And here's my answer. We're not there to solicit grievances. We're not there to solicit grievances. We're not trying to release the kraken of discontent. We're trying to find out today what can we do as a community to be stronger than before. We're trying to find out today what things can happen to make this a greater community. How can we act together to make sure and assure that you can be great here in Dubuque? And when you ask those questions, and you're not casting for disparity, you find the truth, and the truth is that the business community is proud of this town. Could we do better, Greater Dubuque, city of Dubuque, leadership in industry and commerce? Of course we can, and we will. Utility Services Index, everything was ranked highly. Even on an index of services in the city, there were some things that dropped. Community planning did drop in the city of Dubuque. On a scale of 1 to 7, the business community, 300 businesses ranked at 5.18 out of 7. Pretty good grade, probably better than my average when I was in school. Traffic control flow, eh, dropped a little bit to 4.91. Zoning and building dropped a little bit, 4.89. Childcare dropped to 4.33. Air service, sorry, 2.06. But the facts are that I think the business community is proud of this town. They want it to do better and better, and so do we. Finally, annual report. First of all, this is our annual report. It's available to anyone that wants to see it. It's on greaterdubuque.org. You go to our homepage, which is greaterdubuque.org. You click "Who Are We?" which is on the homepage in the far right on the menu. You click onto "Who Are We?", and then you'll see staff, board, news, investors, annual reports, and that includes a copy of our annual report. You can click on—if you have an hour and 15 minutes of leisure time, or a thunderstorm, or it's 100 degrees out and you want to stay cool, you can watch an hour and 15 minutes of our annual meeting was held in July. So what does our annual report say? I'm not going to go through it page by page, but I do want to touch on the things that are most important. That is, what are our goals and how are we doing? And by the way, this is the first year of a five-year capital campaign called "You Can Be Great Here," with the primary focus being recruiting workforce and population and others that I'll get into in a bit. Our goal is a big hairy audacious goal. It's increasing the number of people working in our community to 64,000. As I mentioned to you, June of this year, we hit 61,000. We're going to get there, but we're going to have to do a lot of things right to achieve that goal, and we're going to have to outperform most of the communities in the Midwest to get to that number by 2027. We said we wanted to increase the median household income to 76,000. We started out at 64,493. In the first year, we've had about an 8% increase to 68,198. That exceeds the amount of inflation annually in this community, and I think that bodes well for the workforce in the future. Construction investment. Our goal is to have $1 billion in commercial and residential construction by 2027. I'm pleased to inform the citizens that we reached $256 million, nearly $257 million in the first year of operations, a quarter of $1 billion towards that $1 billion goal with four years left to achieve that goal. And Dubuque County population, we want to increase it to 105,000, and we have to work hard to get there. The Midwest is actually losing population. 88 of the 99 counties in Dubuque lost population in the state of Iowa. I told you, we ranked fifth in population growth of all metros, and yet it's going to take Herculean efforts to be a community of choice, to have 105,000 people who are here by 2027. And while we work to have prosperity in our community, our goal is to reduce poverty in the county, Dubuque County, the MSA, by 5% in that period of time. I anticipate there will actually be an increase in poverty in the next data we receive because the ARPA funds that stimulated the economy and provided $300 credits to adults and children in those households, that funding is gone. I hope I'm wrong, but regardless, we have to find ways of helping people improve their lives through education and through the reward and the dignity of work. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and I thank the mayor and council for your support of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. I thank the business sector, private sector, for being an equal partner in that, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rick. If we have any questions, any discussion. We are deep in thought, Rick. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that the first two items on the agenda, the action items, was a good one-two for you. I mean, your—all your businesses and your support had a lot to do with everything in number one and two. I didn't hear you take any credit for it because you usually don't take any credit. But so many great things are happening, and it is because of partnerships, and we really appreciate the partnership with the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. And did you have any thoughts about those first two action items? We had the Telegraph Herald article about the Moody's upgrade, and then, of course, we're named one of the thriving communities.
Well, first of all, something I will take credit tonight for is not contributing to the food scraps because I clean my plate every single meal, as you can see. Seriously, I—first of all, I think it's a great move, and obviously it shows financial discipline to have that upgrade from Moody's. It is a counterpoint to some other rankings that Moody's has, but it's because they do that from 10,000 feet, 50,000 feet. In fact, sometimes it looks like they do it from the moon, and so the information isn't as credible, but obviously the detail of financial management is the key to having a strong bond rating, and kudos to the city for that. What was the second question, Councilman Resnick?
Well, just a general reaction to the good news, and you talked about it a little bit, too. And I know you always warned us that good news does not mean we're done, right? And the mayor has also mentioned that tonight, that that's—we're going in the right direction. That's all it means, and that we need to continue to work on those things to make Dubuque the—you know, the community of choice, as you say.
Well, I would say that someone once said that, you know, when you think you've arrived, you've already missed the train. So I think it's healthy to have that—a healthy sense of skepticism about whatever degree of prosperity we hold, and I think we have to understand what the data tells us, not what a motion tells us, but what the data tells us about where we are and where we need to go as a region and as a community in Dubuque's case. I failed to mention that one of the things that we're pleased to do and have retained Dave Lyons to do for us in collaboration with the city is to manage the facilitation of— of rebirth of the development roundtables. We had one in July, it focused on the design review team, DRT process. I think that was a tremendous meeting where we made some progress. Greater Dubuque Development in turn has changed our policies and procedures as a result of that meeting. We now have a staff person at every DRT meeting. And for the citizens of Dubuque, that's where the city sits down with all their different department heads about someone who's doing development in our community to try to get to yes on that project. I think the pandemic sort of took us off track. We didn't have that face-to-face kind of communication and, you know, mixing it up to find solutions. So Greater Dubuque Development will attend every DRT meeting regardless of whether we have a project that we're involved in or not. We will contact the developers that presented at that DRT meeting to see if they are satisfied with the results, and if not, why not? And we will summarize those results at every DRT meeting and deliver that information to the city manager and stand ready to address any issues that come from it. The next meeting is Thursday of this week. It will focus on the legitimate question of what is the responsibility of developers for infrastructure that serve that development and the community at large. There will also be discussion about the general culture of development in our community and how it works and how we can improve it. And there will be other meetings going forward, and we will be back, I believe, in November for a report to the mayor and council on the progress of each of these roundtable meetings. And eventually we'll get back to home base and I think continue the developer meeting and perhaps even have side meetings with business. Know that the invite list for these meetings is over 100. It's not just defined developers, it includes financial institutions, healthcare providers, institutions of higher learning, engineering, architecture, contractors, developers, manufacturers and service providers. It's a broad cross-section of the community to really get an opportunity to vet them and to see how we can be stronger in development, because we all want that. At the end of the day, somebody has to have a job and a future, and that's what economic development and slash community development is all about.
Thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So reflecting on their annual report and all the great information Rick shared with us, I really want to call your attention to page 18 of the report because page 18 shows the members of the Board of Directors. And I'll remember from reading it in the history books that in 1980s, when Dubuque was having all the difficulties and had the highest unemployment rate in the country, the decision was made by this community to create the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. And the idea was to make it a big tent organization. So business leaders are represented on there, the colleges are represented on there, the City of Dubuque is represented on there with three city council members, I'm sorry, the mayor and two city council members and the city manager. State legislators are represented on there. There's two union leaders on the board, unions are represented on there. It was meant to be a big tent organization to get everybody's voice at the table. But since then, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, so since the 1980s, has forged another component called the Future Leadership Team, which you can see at the bottom of that page, and they've even expanded the voices that have input into economic development in our community by bringing in, I would suggest, the leaders who are the up-and-comers in their different businesses and they're nominated by their businesses and put on this Future Leadership Team. And one of their members is actually on the Board of Directors. Back to this idea of a big tent organization where everybody's voice gets to be heard. And then I guess I would take you to the page 20 and 21. And you can see when they did their five-year capital campaign and raised about $12 million to show you what kind of community support exists, they have two pages of businesses. And of course, the City of Dubuque and Dubuque County are also contributors to the financing of the organization. So I just think it's a really important point about their annual report.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Well, Rick, thank you very much for being here. And I have to say, you know, of all the times of the year, now is the time that I really appreciate hearing from the perspective of you and your organization and the businesses that you help to represent and to serve. The report that you read to us, you know, the survey of businesses and the things that businesses are looking for, people that are working at those businesses are looking for, essentially what our workforce really needs from us as a community, very much on my mind, and I'm guessing the mind of my city council colleagues here as we enter into our goal-setting process tomorrow night. It's, you know, when we think about what we need to be and where we want to go, it's surveys like that that are really, really important to us to be able to think about what the best direction might be. So thank you for sharing that with us tonight.
Certainly.
All right. Well, thank you very much for being here. Motion was to receive and file and hear that presentation. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number four is request for work session, developers' roundtable report.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and set a work session for Monday, November 6, 2023, at 5:15 PM.
Second by Jones.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Jones. That is before a regularly scheduled meeting, so we should be available. And actually, Rick just pointed that out in his presentation that that is coming up. So looking forward to hearing that report from the meetings that will be held between now and then. All right, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number five is platting of city property along East Fifth Street and Bell Street in the Port of Dubuque for McCoy Group Inc. Development Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus LaHoya is recommending city council approval of the platter survey for Lot 1-1 and Lot 2-1 of Riverwalk Ninth Edition in the City of Dubuque, Dubuque County, pursuant to a development agreement with McCoy Group Incorporated. In June of this year, the McCoy Group purchased the former Bra Hill Building and property at 501 Bell Street in the Port of Dubuque for its corporate headquarters. Per Resolution 198-23, the City of Dubuque and McCoy Group entered into a development agreement providing for the sale of city-owned real estate adjacent to the McCoy Group property. The agreement provides for the sale of the existing parking lot area to the north of the building and property at 501 Bell Street to accommodate parking for the McCoy Group employees. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to point out, sometimes people are wondering what happens in closed session and what do we talk about? And this is what we talk about. So this is something that we're all familiar with. We all put our opinions in, and then we decide, and then the mayor takes a read of the room, and then we go forward. So, I mean, this is exactly, a lot of thought went into this and a lot of conversation. So we came with this, and I'm glad that McCoy has agreed with this situation, and I'd like to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? All right, motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number six, request to rename Dubuque Ice Arena to I'm On Arena.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is recommending city council approval to rename Dubuque Ice Arena to I'm On Arena. The city entered into a partnership with the Dubuque Racing Association on January 1st, 2022 with an interim staffing agreement for the Mystique Community Ice Center. The ice arena was closed June 1st, 2022 to begin the settlement remediation project. This project was completed October 31st, 2022, with all ice activities resuming at that time. Schmidt Island Development Corporation and the city executed the Schmidt Island Management Agreement and Addendum on October 20th, 2022 to fully transition all ice arena day-to-day management activities beyond what the staffing agreement outlined. The addendum is specific to the ice arena and the agreement covers amenities on the island. Schmidt Island Development Corporation has done an outstanding management of the Dubuque Ice Arena since taking over in late October of 2022. Their day-to-day management of the arena has led to a very successful hockey, ice sports and activities season after the reopening. Their focus has been on customer experience, building customer loyalty and efficient and effective ice center operations. This has led to many changes to the way that business is being done on a day-to-day basis. Recently, University of Dubuque announced a partnership with the ice arena that brings another ice user group and more activities to the ice arena. In a quest to look continuously at the efficient and effective management and marketing of the ice arena, the team has begun focusing on sponsorships and naming. These are within the scope of services outlined in the Schmidt Island Management Agreement and Addendum between the city and Cid. Their focus is also on working toward the most viable financial operation, which does affect the city's budget. Currently, the city budgets a $100,000 management fee and a $250,000 operation subsidy for the ice arena. Any sponsorships would help the bottom line, which reduces the request for subsidy from the city. I'm On has signed a letter of intent that would be for five years with an option to extend an additional five years. The initial sponsorship fee in aggregate would be $500,000 and annual installments of $100,000. I'm On would be responsible for all requisite promotional costs associated with the naming rights for items, including signage production and installation cost. This funding would be used in the Cid operations budget of the ice arena. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
We always talk about partnerships, and I think this will be a great one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor. I'm On's certainly brought a presence to Dubuque and has been very aggressive in getting their product out there, and it's awesome to see them want to buy into Dubuque in this spectacular way. So thank you to I'm On for doing this, and of course, I support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Barber.
Can I ask Marie a question? Okay.
Good evening, Marie Ware, Leisure Services Manager.
Yeah, so thank you very much. And I know that these sponsorships are not easy to come by, and I was just wondering if you could share with us how these negotiations came about? Did we have opportunities with others as well? Or just kind of give us an idea of the whole situation? I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So the way the management agreement is set up is so that the leadership belongs to Schmidt Island Development, working, of course, with DRA on these things. And so just like with our Five Flags agreements and others, it's up to them what process that they use. So if they want to go to a specific particular vendor and search them out, they can do that. That's what's different than, obviously, if it was us as a city, we would be much more, hey, we have this thing available, so here's what's the opportunity that's out there. And so they really looked at, you know, what makes sense. There were some different relationships that had been established. Obviously, just as was pointed out, I'm On has been very active here and had noted an interest in getting involved in the community, you might say. And so they took advantage of that and some existing conversations going on about improvements to the island and moved that forward.
Well, thank you. I think it's quite clever because not only does I'm On get some promotion, some branding for their broadband, but it really helps brand the City of Dubuque as a provider of high-speed internet for current residents as well as future residents. So I really think it helps bring a branding to Dubuque potentially as a high-tech city. So thank you very much, and I look forward to supporting this as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So if I could ask another question? And so I was just wondering, I noticed that it's five years and then an additional five years perhaps, and then perhaps some renegotiation after that. Is that how that works?
Yes. All that's outlined is what's in the letter of intent, which is just for that specific timeframe. Fairly typical in most agreements like these is you have an initial years, you have the opportunity, and then if you have a great relationship, very often, particularly in naming, and I can't speak to this one specifically, but when you look at naming of facilities, that is a very typical thing that you would likely continue on if it was a good deal for everybody because you already have the signage up, it has name recognition, all those other things. But sometimes there are times, and I'm not saying it would happen with this, where, you know, the company no longer is interested in that, so they're not willing to be able to pay that continuous naming fee. So there are times when both agree, they'll part ways in the future. So this allows that opportunity to not only begin but extend and then see where we're at at that particular time. And again, that would be up in there if we still have a continuing management agreement. As long as that management agreement outlined it, it would be up to that managing organization to do that, not necessarily us as a city. But as you can see with this one, the great news about it is that they've negotiated something that really helps the bottom line from our side of the world as well. So it really is that partnership win-win in this particular negotiation and would be for any other types of naming and sponsorships because there are times when you see naming of a building, but then areas within a building are named or things like that. So there's always opportunities for a lot of different, a lot of different options.
Great. And talk about options, one last question, that is, you know, I respect the process and all, but they regularly play on their name. Do you consider I'm On Ice Arena, I'm On, you know, an ice, I'm On Ice? Did they think about that?
You know, I asked them about one particular thing within the name, and, you know, the thing is, is that I can ask, but this is one of those things where it's like they've had a negotiation that's gone back and forth in order to get to a point of, you know, because this is kind of a courting sort of a thing, if you think about it with the naming. It's like, does this match? Are we good partners to be able, because I'm On would be looking at it too, going, hey, is this a good thing for me and us as a company and does it meet our values? So there's a whole lot that goes into the negotiations of what the actual name is. Because that is an element that was done by the two of them, because it's an agreement between them, I was not privy to those. But, you know, as I even asked my question, it really was more from a curiosity standpoint than their actual logistics because those negotiations really belong to them. And it would only be if this group here would have real heartburn about it, that you felt it really needed something or needed a change. But that would mean they would have to go back and look at this negotiation, and sometimes in negotiations, they go away. So, you know, we could get real particular about adding a little piece or something, but they may have already gone through that in the decision-making process as they work together as partners.
Great. I do not have heartburn about this. They could have considered I'm On a masterpiece of the Mississippi arena, they could have done that too. But I get it, I appreciate the efforts that you've made, and I think this is going to be a win-win.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would agree. This is the opposite of heartburn. This is, this one's great. Yeah, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
There is an I'm On Ice Arena in Cedar Rapids. Maybe they didn't want to copy the name, but so thank you.
Well, yeah, this is, this is exciting. So thank you very much for being here to answer some questions, Marie, and thank you to everybody who's been involved in this. This is, this is an exciting development for sure.
Thanks for your consideration.
All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
September 2022, the city council approved a slate of housing incentives that are attached to this memo for reference. Those incentives took into consideration such factors as whether a project was located in an existing urban revitalization district or a new one, and whether the project was creating market rate or affordable units. The city of Dubuque now has 1,942 housing units on the drawing board at different stages of implementation. Beginning just over 10 years ago, several projects in the downtown area, such as Carradco, Lynnseed, Novelty Iron Works, Franklin School, and Merge, were initially offered 10 years of TIF rebates for the creation of housing. But the developers soon realized that this was not enough assistance to make the project successful. In response to this, the city council approved amendments that increased the number to 15 years of TIF rebates. These were addressed on a case-by-case basis. Recent development agreements for downtown housing have reverted back to 10 years of tax increment financing, and many projects have opted for 10 years of tax abatement instead, since this is currently a more generous incentive than tax increment financing rebates. Tax abatement was not available to the above-mentioned projects since they were not located in an urban revitalization area at the time of their agreements. In ongoing review of the city work, it has come to our attention that communities in Iowa that are having success attracting housing developers are providing additional incentives compared to the menu of incentive options approved by the city council in September. To more rapidly address Dubuque's lack of housing options, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending adding to the downtown slum and blight urban renewal district an added incentive that would offer the choice between 10 years of tax abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing rebates, or 15 years of tax increment financing rebates. This formalizes the past practice of providing 15 years of tax increment financing rebates to these downtown urban renewal district housing creation projects. This incentive would be available to projects regardless of rent rates, but would in any case prohibit discrimination based on source of income. We know that downtown living is key to creating a thriving community, which attracts families and a workforce, as well as creating a more environmentally sustainable community. To that end, Jill Connors is proposing that this program be limited to the greater downtown urban renewal area. Accelerating efforts downtown will also make use of the numerous vacant buildings and infill sites. The governor has recently signed into law House File 718, which affects the future level of tax abatement available to a developer. As this has created some uncertainty as to whether tax abatement or tax increment financing rebates are more beneficial to a project, I believe it is advantageous to offer the choice between the 10 years of abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing rebates. This formalizes the past practice of providing 15 years of tax increment financing rebates to these downtown urban renewal district housing creation projects. This incentive would be available to projects regardless of rent rates, but would in any case prohibit discrimination based on source of income. We know that downtown living is key to creating a thriving community, which attracts families and a workforce, as well as creating a more environmentally sustainable community. To that end, Jill Connors is proposing that this program be limited to the greater downtown urban renewal area. Accelerating efforts downtown will also make use of the numerous vacant buildings and infill sites. The governor has recently signed into law House File 718, which affects the future level of tax abatement available to a developer. As this has created some uncertainty as to whether tax abatement or tax increment financing rebates are more beneficial to a project, I believe it is advantageous to offer the choice between the 10 years of abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. The developer would weigh the risks and possible rewards of each option and indicate their preference to the Economic Development Department for inclusion in the development agreement. This program enhancement will continue to aggressively address Dubuque's lack of sufficient housing stock at all price points, which is a barrier to both workforce and population growth, and specifically in the downtown core. The city will continue to offer facade rebates, help with architectural and engineering costs, and the expenses of financial planning. In addition, the city offers other incentives, including but not limited to land discounts and $10,000 per housing unit created in the downtown urban renewal district. Developers also routinely access federal historic tax credits, state historic tax credits, and low-income housing tax credits. The city also invests significantly in downtown public improvement projects, parking creation, transit services, and infrastructure upgrades. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
If anybody didn't quite grasp this, this is a big deal, and it's the council's hope from our closed-session discussions. Again, another project under discussion for quite a while as we work to improve and accelerate development in Dubuque. This, this could be a game changer for downtown. This could be a game changer for the empty spaces above businesses. This could be a game changer for the empty storefronts below apartments, to get that all to come together and to get a lot of people living downtown where you can walk to work and walk to services that you need and maybe not even need an automobile. This is a good thing. I would, I'm excited about this. I would caution anybody that's teetering on the edge, the legislature's coming back next January, and God knows what they're going to do next to cities and to incentives like this. So, I'd go quickly before, before they get a chance to wrangle it, and maybe they won't, but recent history has suggested that they might. That said, here's an opportunity to grow, but it's going to be the actions of others that cause it to actually happen. So, step right up. We're ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I would just like to share appreciation to city staff and leadership on making recommendations to council about ways that we can support our business community in what is a changing landscape of what will be available in the future and trying to read the cards in advance. Clearly, that's not within anybody's skill set, but boy, if anybody's trying, we are. I'd like to call attention to what this is, which is listening. This is listening as a council and as a city staff as to what is being requested and coming to the table with what we are able to and doing our part. And so, I would ask that people continue to speak with us directly if they have concerns about our current climate of what we as a council can do to not just listen, but to act. And so, I'm really proud of tonight and excited to vote for this.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to add that this is, you know, I already said this about one thing tonight that we've already voted on, but this is another great example of using data to drive policy. I mean, we looked at what other cities are doing. We identified that this is something that could actually be beneficial for the city of Dubuque to adopt, like other cities are already doing, and I think it's a great move forward. I really do think that this is, I really hope at least, that this could be very helpful for development as we move forward with housing development in particular. To Mr. Jones's point, you know, the, well, first of all, to Ms. Wethel's point, I completely agree with you. That's a really good point that you made about the fact that we, right now, there's a lot of great discussion going on in the city of Dubuque, and we really are paying a lot of attention to what people are saying, and us as a council, but also city staff. I mean, we're getting some, some great ideas for new policies here, some great information that we're receiving from things like the roundtable discussions that are happening and those types of things. We've got a community that's very active and very involved right now. That, I think, is very indicative of a healthy community. So, I'm glad to see that we're moving those types of things forward. Going back to the point about the legislature, this does concern me. The incentives that we're talking about here, both TIF and the urban renewal, it is, it's something that could, I'm sorry, tax abatement. I apologize, I misspoke there. Tax abatement and TIF. These incentives are things that we're hearing that the legislature wants to look at as a possibility for removing these or possibly slimming down on how these could be used. I, I think it's pretty obvious. I think that's, that'd be a mistake. But what I hope we can do as a city is be an example, to be able to show our legislators and legislators from across the state, well, this is how it could work. This is what we need to do. We've got businesses that are telling us they need workers. We've got people that are telling us that they need amenities, people that are telling us they want to live here and they need places to live, so we're giving it to them. This is how we're doing it. And I think that that's what, the kind of discussion that we need to have as we, as we build those partnerships. One thing that I think is really important, and this is for us, those discussions need to happen now with our legislators and with people of influence in the legislature. We need to have those discussions now. Now is the time that the legislature is planning for what's going to start in January. This is something that we've talked about as a, as an Iowa League of Cities, as a metro coalition, with our own folks that do the lobbying for us and lobbying with us there in the Iowa Capitol. We, we need to have these discussions and build these relationships now to talk about what these benefits really are. So, as we are out in the community, as we're doing all the things that we just normally do, I encourage us all to make sure that we're, we're talking to our legislators very directly and very often about how we can use these incentives and use them to have very positive growth for the city of Dubuque. All right. With that said, we have a motion to receive and file and approve this incentive. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight, Cities Forward Invitation to Participate.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousell, a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Sustainable Community Coordinator Gina Bell is recommending city council approval to participate in the Cities Forward Initiative. The city of Dubuque has been selected as one of 12 U.S. cities to participate in the inaugural Cities Forward Initiative. In June 2023, the Office of Sustainability applied to participate in the Cities Forward Initiative, a collaborative partnership of the U.S. Department of State, Local Governments for Sustainability, Resilient City Catalyst, and the Institute of the Americas. The program provides peer-to-peer exchange, capacity building, and diplomatic engagement, all focused on implementing projects that solve critical urban challenges around sustainability, inclusivity, and resiliency, and takes place over three years. Cities Forward will be guided by three key principles. Number one, it will be city-led. Local stakeholders will lead action plan design and local project implementation. Number two, the least are first. Actions taken must benefit the city's poorest, most vulnerable citizens. And number three, sustainability. Solutions must be environmentally, economically, and socially sustainable. The city received notice that we were chosen as one of the 12 U.S. cities to participate in late July. The program helps to further the work of the Office of Sustainability, meet professional development goals, and advances equity while building our own capacity and working closely with our Latin American counterparts to learn and develop as well. There is no required budget to participate. There is one required planning session in Mexico City, which is covered by the program. Two additional meetings are scheduled, but they are optional, and the Office of Sustainability will review travel budget balances at that time to determine feasibility. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We already referenced the fact that the last action item was a big deal, and I'll tell you how I know that this is a big deal, is the moment that it was announced, I started getting texts and emails and calls from all over the country about this. There are a lot of people that have said, congratulations on being chosen as part of the Cities Forward Initiative. So, this is, this is very, very exciting for a city like Dubuque. This is just a, you know, not only are we able to position ourselves as an example for the rest of our country to follow, but this is something that we can both set an example and learn from cities from all over the world. And this is just a, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for us in the city. So, I'm very excited about this. Mr. Jones.
So, we're one of 12 U.S. cities selected. In case you didn't know, there are 19,450-some incorporated cities in the United States. Now, they didn't all apply, but we won. Our team won. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Didn't know that trivia. Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
Well, thank you. When I saw this come out, I was really excited, and I have agreed to participate, and sustainability is something that's really important to me, and this just seemed like a super opportunity that I just couldn't pass up, and I can't wait to hear the best practices, the, the learning opportunities are going to be substantial, and what we can bring back to our community is just so exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, thank you. Before Ms. Rousell spoke, I wanted to thank Ms. Rousell for going because this is quite a sacrifice that she's making, and it's all on our behalf. So, I appreciate it very much. It is a lot of work and really puts your, your life kind of really disjointed everything that you've been doing so smoothly. Now, you're going to leave everything and go down and do this for the citizens of Dubuque. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
When we, as a council, first received this information, the first thought I had was, boy, I hope Laura Rousell can go. And it's because she has sustainability in her bones, and I am proud that you will be representing us.
Thank you.
All right. And as, it's not in the, in the memo that Mike just read, but there is an item attached to this that talks a little bit more about the timeline for this, through July of 2023 through March of 2026, and how we're probably going to be talking about this quite a bit more. There are going to be a number of things that come across our desk here and ways that we're going to be able to communicate this to the rest of the community about what this really means for Dubuque and how we're participating. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve this, approve our participation. So, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is Burlington Street Water Main Improvement Project 2023 Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
A motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Corey, please.
Water Department Manager Chris Lester is recommending city council approval to award the Burlington Street Water Main Improvement Project 2023 to Chick-fry Excavating in the amount of $312,252. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Corey. Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, Mr. Sprank, sorry.
I'm sorry. This, I know that the neighbors would definitely be happy that with the amount of water breaks that they've had that we can address this, so looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. All right. Seeing no others, the motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 10, Notice of Award and Request to Execute Agreement for 2023-24 City of Dubuque AmeriCorps Program: Creating Opportunities.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is recommending city council approval to execute the AmeriCorps Creating Opportunities Grant Agreement. Creating Opportunities Grant Agreement. City Council approved the request to apply for the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps Program Creating Opportunities Grant on December 19, 2022. On July 1, 2023, Leisure Services was notified of the award. The details of the award are as follows. The award amount is for $404,798. The matching dollars are $217,776. The source of the match is the Hillcrest Family Services for $25,500, St. Mark Youth Enrichment for $15,750, the Dubuque Community School District for $45,000, and the City of Dubuque for $131,526. The City of Dubuque AmeriCorps Program Partners in Learning has been extremely successful in its 23 years of operation, 15 of which have been under the leadership of the City of Dubuque. The program's success is apparent in the over 1,000 AmeriCorps alumni giving over 500,000 hours of service in our community. These members and alumni have performed invaluable service. AmeriCorps members are paid a living allowance stipend for their service and receive an education award. The stipends and awards are a part of the grant. These funds are often directly invested in our community in the form of groceries, rent, or tuition to local colleges and universities, as well as other direct living expenses. Some of the AmeriCorps members are grandparents and earn education awards they are passing along to their grandchildren. The Corporation for National and Community Service has established priority areas of funding for their grants. The Partners in Learning program fits nicely into the Corporation for National and Community Service Priority Area of Education. The Corporation for National and Community Service emphasizes performance measures and being able to measure progress. They require evidence-based approaches with evaluation data and use of a logic model. This competitively funded grant is a continued effort to support the Dubuque community youth through social, emotional learning interventions, academic support, mentoring, and future-ready programs through Carnegie-Stout Public Library, City of Dubuque Arts and Cultural Affairs, City of Dubuque Engineering, Dubuque Community School District, Hillcrest Family Services, Multicultural Family Center, and St. Mark Youth Enrichment in partnership with the Goals of the Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support and the Office of Equity and Human Rights. With a primary focus on fostering essential skills, AmeriCorps members will spearhead programs that target self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, goal-directed behavior, relationship skills, personal responsibility, decision-making, and optimistic thinking. Other related programs include the Four Mounds Heart Program and the Northeast Iowa Community College Opportunity Dubuque Program. By prioritizing these critical attributes, the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps members aim to equip local youth with the necessary tools to navigate challenges, enhance well-being, and succeed academically and beyond. Each of these attributes are often traits that we admire in our friends, family members, colleagues, and leaders. At the conclusion of the first program year, AmeriCorps members will be responsible for driving measurable changes in students' social and emotional competencies, empowering them to thrive in various aspects of life. Through in-school and out-of-school time programs, these dedicated individuals will create supportive environments that promote personal growth and positive development among the student population. In addition to the impact on community youth and local organizations, one of the areas that the AmeriCorps program prioritizes is with the AmeriCorps members themselves. The program strives to recruit from a diverse pool of candidates, with the program previously having had a wide range of AmeriCorps from retirees to college students, to newcomers to Dubuque, to stay-at-home parents, to people looking for a career change. The program strives to encourage its AmeriCorps members to recognize their service as engagement and continue to serve in some facet after their term of service. The City of Dubuque will have 45 AmeriCorps members who will develop and implement social and emotional learning interventions to K-12 grade students through in-school and out-of-school time programs in Dubuque. At the end of the first program year, the AmeriCorps members will be responsible for a change in social, emotional skills. In addition, the AmeriCorps members will leverage 100 volunteers who will be engaged in mentoring youth and supporting youth programming. The $404,798 AmeriCorps investment will be matched with $217,760, $176,526 in public funding, and $40,250 in private funding. Community Impact Director Heather Satterley and AmeriCorps Coordinator Sarah Burner will lead this effort. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion, questions? I'm just so happy that we continue to invest in this program. It is a transformational program for not just the people that are served by it, but the people that serve within it. And I think the way that the City of Dubuque has leveraged the AmeriCorps program in such a positive way is just absolutely fantastic. So I'm really happy to see this again and move forward with this grant agreement. All right. Motion is to receive and file and approve this. Yes, that is correct. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Merle, I'm sorry, action item number 11 is Merle Crawford Feature for Leisure Services Summer Employment Promotion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and watch the video.
Second by Barber.
Motion by Jones, second by Barber. Eric, you can roll the video, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we go...
Oh, please, wait, Eric.
If you've not met Merle Crawford, you ought to, and it's easy to do because he's really easy to find at Flora Pool, because everybody else that works there is 17 years old. This is a guy that 33 years ago sponsored me to come into Kiwanis. He worked as our media director for the city of Dubuque for a long time, and kind of like me, he did a dismal job of retiring because he's been covering vacations at the health department, at the park department, at the fire department, for secretarial staff and others. He's a musician, he's a scout master, he led the drive at Westminster Church to raise money to rebuild their pipe organ. I've been through one of those with my mom. That's no small task. He's one of the most amazing human beings ever made. So, thanks, Merle. And who else would you feature? Of course, it's about him.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Mr. Jones. All right, Eric, you can go ahead and roll that, please.
When I'm working early in the morning here at the pool, it's sort of like having your own private paradise that isn't private necessarily, in that I can come when it's quiet and the steam is rising off the pool. I draw from the energy and the entertainment of all of the high school and college-age folk here at the pool. That's really great fun for a person my age.
And most grateful to be more than three times your age and still standing here in this beautiful place.
Truly, I think that the one word that describes Merle the best is dedication. He's been with the city for almost 40 years, and 20 of that being with the pools. He is so dedicated every year, and he is the one person that will be here first thing in the morning, and he comes in on the weekends. He trains other people when they get here. He's just a fixture here at the pool, so we love having him.
They treat me like a king. I don't know if it's because I'm not in the chain of command, but rather an older person with experience that they can talk to at any time. A kind of a camp counselor in that sense, an older one, sometimes a default adopted grandpa.
I'm dealing with a younger staff, so they see him as a mentor, but also like this wonderful leader and teacher, and he's grounded, and he keeps the kids kind of working as a team and a family as well. So they all respect him so much.
The first time we did a potluck for the staff of both swimming pools, I said, what can I bring? I'm not a very good cook. Maybe ice cream, and it was a pretty good hit.
Every year, we all look forward to his ice cream. So he does that for the whole staff, and right now we have 98 on staff. He's just taking care of everybody on every level.
I also have friends here among the patrons, the water walkers and others who have been regulars at Flora Pool for years and years. The work at the pool contributes to my health, I believe. The energy, the exercise, being outdoors and under the sun with all of the things that are happening keep me alert and in really pretty good shape. It's a little bit like when I pass through the gate into the pool property, I'm not quite 18 years old again, but maybe 38.
Oh, that was fantastic. What a great video. Thank you, Merle, definitely for your service to the city of Dubuque, but that was, what a great profile of a great person, so thank you for that. All right, well, a motion was to receive and file there. Watch that video. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 12, Police Department Community Resource Officer Profiles Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and view this video.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Anything to add before we get to go on this one?
These are all the future Merle Crawfords that we're going to be talking about.
Perfect. Good addition. All right, Eric, you can go ahead and roll that, please.
It was such a welcoming experience. I knew this is where I want to be. It wasn't just a police department, it's a family. My name is Community Resource Officer Ava Jorin. I'm from Staten Island, New York. My mom is actually from Dubuque, and my dad was a sergeant with NYPD. I go to UD for criminal justice and sociology. I've always loved to help people. I've always admired my dad, seeing what he's done for everyone else. I think that the CRO program definitely provides more of a hands-on experience rather than just an observation.
Get back! Get back!
I think that we get to do everything, from practicing report writing to responding to calls and community-oriented policing. It's important for kids to know that the people in the red shirts aren't people just like them, and I was a kid once too. You know, that wave, that one kid that waves, it's really rewarding, and for the community to notice us and recognize us, it's so much easier to build a relationship with people. You know, it's been a hard transition moving to a new city, but getting the internship as a freshman with the Dubuque Police Department has made it so much easier. Other officers that have gone through the CRO program have stuck around and have become officers on the department, and it's so cool to see that the people that I admired so much growing up were in the position that I'm in today. Now they're officers and corporals and lieutenants, and it's just, it really is the coolest thing. I really hope to be hired along with the Dubuque Police Department one day. It really is my goal and my dream, and I'll continue to work towards it.
Another great video. I don't know about you all, but I've seen the CROs everywhere this summer. I mean, they've been all over. We've got a great group that's been working with the police department, and it, oh, is there another? I'm sorry, there's another video. Oh, I'm talking too early. Go ahead, please, roll the video.
My name's Dave, and I'm a Community Resource Officer in the city of Dubuque. Born and raised in Dubuque, Iowa, I'm currently a student at the University of Iowa. Ever since I was a kid, I always loved helping people and always wanted to be there for people when they weren't in the best spot. Through law enforcement, I'm able to do that, and I feel that's kind of where my calling is. This is a Community Resource Officer position. Instead of a traditional internship approach, they wanted to get us hands-on in doing. You're going to see Community Resource Officers, a lot of us are put on bikes, we're biking throughout the city, stopping at city events and parks or any event that we see going on. We're trying to be there as someone to assist and help out someone in need. Before we ever, you know, step foot out in the uniform, we go through in-processing training. Some of that includes de-escalation, defensive tactics, cuffing, searching. You'll always have an officer there with you, and that officer's kind of directing you, hey, why don't you stay back? Or, hey, you know, why don't you get in on this? This would be good for you. There has to be a, you know, huge bond of trust between you and the officer that you're riding with. The environment is amazing. I've met so many great people, so many people that genuinely care for you, and, you know, you're stuck in a car with them for 10 hours, but you never seem to run out of things to talk about it. It's just been amazing. If you're interested in law enforcement, this is the all-inclusive experience. You're getting paid, and you're getting so much knowledge, this is where you want to
There were only two. That's good. All right, those are two very good videos. And, you know, I'd like to add to just the efforts of our public information department to market these positions and be able to talk about what it means to work for the police department. And, you know, we're working really hard here, I know, to try and increase the staffing at the police department, but this is one piece of a much larger puzzle, and I'm very happy to see people having a great experience in this program, so. All right. We have motion to receive and file that. Watch the video. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 13, Van Clever Family and Miracle League of Dubuque Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Eric, you can roll that video, please.
I always say we live in Connor's world. He's my younger brother, but we're about two years apart. He is always out here organizing, making sure everything is perfect and neat and tidy. That's why we call him the mayor of the field. He's awesome.
Mr. Connor Van Clever.
Hi, yeah. I do get to work alongside not only my daughter, but my son who has special needs. I love being around them, seeing how Connor interacts with everybody, how Haley interacts with everybody, and it's amazing. My mom, Jill, my brother, and myself are the supervisors of the field. It's kind of like a little family environment as well on every weekend.
Ooh, wow, that was a hard one.
My son Connor has Down Syndrome. He was volunteering, and our boss says, I would love to have him come with you all the time. And she made those arrangements and asked if he would be interested in having this as a part-time job, and he loves it because now every time someone starts talking about their job, he talks about my city park because he works for the city. I think it's awesome not only to have a field for our special athletes, but to have an employee says a lot about the city of Dubuque. Working here is not even a job to me. It's just a great time to get out and enjoy the outdoors, enjoy the baseball. These kids are getting such a great opportunity out here that they didn't have a couple years ago. Everybody's involved. It's just a great thing.
So many amazing things keep happening at that Miracle League field. It's one of the best additions to the city that I think I've ever seen, it really is. And to have somebody who's a true mayor like that, mayor of the field, I like that a lot. That is great. That's excellent. Well, thank you to the Van Cleve family and to everybody involved with that video. Well, motion there is to receive and file, and watch that. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Moving on to council member reports.
All right. Any reports today?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
First of all, I got to say our video production is way up there, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, oh my gosh, consistently great.
Yeah.
So congratulations, kudos to them.
So congratulations, kudos to them. And I want to just mention that, you know, I taught my class at one of the local colleges for the first time today. They're all starting. And I just want to, I want to ask our citizens to welcome these students. When you work with them, you know, they're strong and yet fragile, trying to find their place in the world, and just a lot of great people. And so I hope they feel welcome here in Dubuque and maybe want to stay afterwards. I mean, there are some great, great students at our colleges and universities. So let's be nice to them, invite them places, and let's see if we can keep them here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for that, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, I was also at the farmer's market, and Loris had brought, was shuttling down all their students, well, at least all the freshman students. And I ended up striking up a different conversations with a handful of different ones, just welcoming them to the community, and I think that was a nice putting our best foot forward. But then I also, there was a ribbon cutting, which I didn't exactly make, but I just stopped by anyways to talk to the Dubuque Esports League. I think that's right. Yep. A rather interesting group that's basically teaching kids to be mindful when they're trying to navigate the whole world of internet games and gaming, and very interesting. I know the DRA gave them some sponsorship funds, so just it was a very good association. So yeah, happy to report on it.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Well, most of us spent some time last week with our congressional staff members from DC, and I want to thank Senator Grassley, Senator Ernst, and Congresswoman Hinson for allowing them to come to Dubuque. The mayor spoke before about our trip to see them in DC last spring, and all seven of us were able to go, which really sends a message that the community means it, that we mean it, that we need help with some things, that we're having some successes with some things. And last week was our opportunity to show them the other side, to show them the results of their efforts on our behalf and to show them some of the great needs that we're still working on and look for hints and ways to get it done. I know a lot of cities would be better off if they did that, and I know that not very many do, but I sure want to thank the elected team for allowing their employees and encouraging them to get out to Dubuque for those three days. It's real important to us, and I think it was worth the time to them.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to agree, just real quick to add on to that, you know, the relationships that we have are built on those very real situations. And I know, you know, when you talk to the staff that work for the congresspeople that represent us in Washington, DC, they don't often get to see the fruits of their labor. They don't often get to see the ways that things are happening here at home in Iowa from their vantage point in Washington, DC in the way that we show them around here. So it was a very, very good event, and I was glad that everybody was able to make it at one point in time to be able to be there. Ms. Wethel.
I had the pleasure of having coffee with residents at Ecumenical Towers this last week, and I am grateful for their time and allowing me to come and visit with them, but also they're great advocates for what they need in downtown and gave some great ideas about ways we can serve them. Additionally, I did get to attend the Mount Carmel Bluffs opening, which was such a privilege and pleasure, and I'm not glad that you were out of town, but kind of. So the Sisters of Charity of the Blessed Virgin Mary have been incredibly integral as well as other sisters religious in our community, and what a privilege to celebrate some of their achievements. But now creating and supporting through Presbyterian Homes and Services housing that is incredibly crucial for our senior population. And so they've been incredible partners with extensions of sewer mains, sanitary sewer, the water extensions, just infrastructure pieces of this project that they were such great partners on. And so, so appreciative to celebrate with them and just grateful for them to join our community.
Thank you, and thank you for being there when I couldn't. I'm definitely setting up my own visit because I need to go and see everything that's there now, so thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to give Katie a shout out for her wonderful welcome in your absence. And I also have several family friends who are there now who are just elated to be there, and of course, the grounds are gorgeous and the sights are breathtaking. And the care that the residents currently have and will have in the future is just really amazing to see for the City of Dubuque, and they are planning an additional building. So it's really a welcome addition to senior housing, to collaborative and fun living, as you saw tonight with two of the people that actually came to say hello to us with their comments. And you really had a nice vibe there, I think, that people were just really, you know, smiles on their faces and got, there was a lot of women there that I had known through the decades that actually have been their friends for many decades as well. And isn't it interesting that they would all be there together? And I got to go visit with them on their units, and they're all like in a row on the same floor. So it's kind of like a sorority for them, and it's just kind of fun as they are aging and enjoying new living accommodations, which for some of them may be a little bit of a change. But, and it was a great, and I know Rick was in attendance as well. So I wish everybody could just walk over there and take a look. It's really fun.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.